Box says 10 o'clock. Will you please join in the pledge of allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the meeting's ordered. In your packet is the consent agenda. If you had a chance to review it.
Susan, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda A. And I think we can address B when Sam gets up here. Or you want to just find it and move to...
There's Sam right there.
There he is. There you are.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We haven't approved the agenda.
Okay, so we have a motion by Tim to approve the consent agenda A, which is the minutes from last week.
And B, that Sam is here, we'll have a discussion.
Okay, so I need a second so that we...
I'll second that.
All right.
Maria McKinley. Sam, real quick, the new hire. You started her above step two.
Correct.
How come?
Because of her experience.
Where'd she come from?
Ohio.
The, has she started already?
You say she started already?
Correct, yep.
Five thirty-one, so she just started Friday. She started Friday?
Correct.
The, our handbook says that it should be reviewed and approved before implementation.
Oh yeah, there was, we wanted to get her hired before we lost that opportunity. I talked with the sheriff, he was well aware of what we were doing, so.
So what's this, what is that now? Seven or, or more? Three more.
I still need to hire three.
Three more, okay.
We had another resignation last week.
Oh really?
Yep.
To a different...
Can I have one? I just, I just like to, we've been able to know that ahead of time before somebody starts. I mean, you know, we've made, well, we haven't made...
We do our best to try and get you guys the paperwork prior in advance. This particular situation, again, I, I wanted to have her hired before we lost that opportunity, considering we just lost another employee the day, or a few days before. It's, as you know, it's been quite the battle down there.
Yep, yep. Thank you. Still got apps, you're applying.
Yep, the job posting is actually closed right now. We have stood open for 30 days, I believe, or approximately 30 days. We have interviews scheduled. We did one group of interviews, maybe last week or two weeks ago, or I can't remember the date. And we have more scheduled on the 11th. But I, there's not a whole lot of applicants there at this moment. So we'll probably have to open it up again here once we get through this group.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Sam?
I'm good.
Thank, thank you for...
I, again, I, we will definitely try and get the paperwork submitted in advance, this is not going to be the no. Okay.
All right. I think we still need a vote then on that consent agenda. So all those in favor opposed, motion is carried.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Next discussion and our decision on disaster recovery response. Doug Reed, thank you so much for joining us this morning. Get an update for us. How can we help?
Good morning. Yeah, so things are clicking relatively along. I believe last time, last update, I provided, we were just finishing up reoperations. And then those kind of things have settled, settled down a little bit. There's always a little bit more to do with that and to handle that stuff locally. I believe the engineers' office here and just, I think maybe towards the end of last week or over the weekend has shut down the, the tree dump on the, on the rural side. I know they had, I was at least speaking with them just a little bit ago, when I came over here, that they had a bunch of stuff brought in on Saturday, I think it was. They're going to close out some of the numbers on that and we'll get it reported up. Right now, main focus has shifted really just trying to work with, with FEMA that's been assigned in the state to try and get a public assistance program added to the federal declaration that we have right now for April 26th, which will be huge in the recovery for the city of Minden, but also for the county and some of the other communities that provided response and assistance during that. Like we always said, that's going to be an uphill fight, but we're, we're edging much closer and we're making the case with our federal partners, even at the regional and national level of, of why it's important that we do it. Just the impacts Iowa has seen so far this year. That, you know, even though you can't tie them all together into one disaster, there's a pretty significant cumulative effect that everybody and everybody's budgets are feeling. So, so it's going to be important that we do that. Also, towards the end of this week, start the more formalized process to do the same thing for public assistance for the storm that caused damage, damages in the county, starting May 21st. And then that just kind of continued on to the 24th and those, those things, which is part of the overall system that, that had the tornadoes in Montgomery County, south of us, as part of that system, and traveled up and, and did the damage in, in Greenfield and those kind of things. So there's already an expedited federal declaration on that disaster event that covers individual assistance and public assistance, but only for a few counties that, that were immediately impacted, like, like a Dare County and, and a couple of those. So we'll be working on adding other counties that, that qualify and, and could be eligible to of that disaster too. So a lot of, a lot of that is, has taken, taken priority right now because they, they like their data, they like their news. Sometimes it's tough to get that stuff, especially when we have a lot going on and now you got to separate it out by dates and it's like, okay, well, we'll, we'll do our best for sure. We'll be meeting with FEMA and some federal ag folks from USDA likely tomorrow to set up a ag-specific disaster recovery center in the county that will serve multiple counties in the area. They reached out and wanted to offer some resources on the agricultural front now that we have an agricultural declaration that Farm Service Agency will be the point agency for. Those, those run directly from producers, farmers to, to the feds, much like, much like individual assistance does on the, on the kind of homeowner business side of things. So we'll be looking at that. We're likely going to set up a mag disaster recovery center in the city of Traynor. So it's centrally located because it's going to cover multiple periods, multiple, you know, disasters. We'll probably see folks coming in even from the, the 21st and the 24th of May with all the flash flooding and the debris from that. So we'll do that, plus we'll, like I said, we'll have a handful of other counties that will need to access this site. So I believe the way they're going to structure that is they'll have three announced dates that they'll be there from like lunchtime till eight in the evening. We're still working all those details out and have that hammered down after they need to sign it. Figure things out and that's, that's supposed to happen tomorrow. Just because we couldn't make today happen with the elections and everything else going on.
Will you see if they're going to set something up towards Crescent? I was out...
For ag?
No, for homes. I was out in Minden the other day. They didn't even know about Crescent, but...
Those people didn't know.
Right, you're right.
But they're not supposed to know about Crescent.
Okay.
Know their mission.
And there's still a lot of calls coming in and seeing if they can get help.
And, and that's part of the problem that we're having.
Yeah.
I keep getting told that there's a lot of calls coming in, but no calls are coming in to me.
Yeah.
I have received an email from the city clerk out there asking those questions and, and ask them to try and quantify those numbers because if the numbers are there and we can make the case, I'll send them over there. Right now, we're planning on moving the mobile disaster recovery center sometime here in the near future from Minden, once that's been completely saturated down to Council Bluffs, because we know we've had over a hundred some people impacted here for sure.
Okay.
That have already sought assistance from local entities. So those numbers they can get behind and support, what we're having trouble is, you know, like we spoke on the phone, is quantifying those numbers up there because we've had FEMA and SDA, Red Cross and Salvation Army up there outgoing house to house for two, three weeks solid between those three organizations. And the numbers just aren't shaken out to move the vehicle there. Not saying it's off the table, but when they're moving assets...
To be as close as anything.
Yeah, absolutely. And it, and it, and it could be, you know, just as easy access for them to, because most of the damage area that we're talking about in that area is south of Crescent, between Council Bluffs and Crescent. So that, that's where the, you know, highest level of concentration is, where, where we do the most pain for the buck. So I think they'll still be able to get there. It'll certainly be easier than Minden. Getting one directly up there for what we're seeing and, and what we're hearing.
I think Council Bluffs would work, just keep that.
Yeah, that, that's, that's already, that's already in the plans. We're, we're planning for that transition now. It's, it's going to happen. Because we want to keep that thing as long as we can with everything else going on in Iowa, but then you look at, you know, every, every state in our FEMA region, which is Iowa, Nebraska, Kansas and Missouri, and then the neighboring states like down in Oklahoma, but especially Texas have all just been pounded and, and continuing, right? We've got another chance of severe weather this afternoon. It's election day, yay fun. So, so we're kind of working, working on some stuff for that and all that good stuff. But yeah, it, it will be moving down this way and further west into the county for sure. That was, that move was always on the table. So outside of that, those are the, the main things, you know, reaching out to annoy some of the city and county department heads again, as we gear up to get numbers from the May 21st events and moving forward just to make sure that we've got everything we can captured. I think that that public assistance request is likely for us for that time period just because some of the damages we're getting reported in the drainage and levee districts because of the flash flooding and things like that. Of which hopefully you all saw my, my email on Molins Lake and things like that. And the engineers have kind of been up there to work at that, that, that we use, since that falls under your guidance jurisdiction. On the long-term recovery side, we've held back just a little bit, having some initial priority meetings because it's been a, a challenge finding an appropriate organization that can kind of coordinate and lead the effort on, on say things with like long-term housing type of strategic planning and issues. And I think we've got that pinned down. I just had a conversation with the state who's got some information from the Iowa Finance Authority. And we'll be having a discussion and, and probably using the folks, hopefully once I have a conversation with them later today as kind of the coordinating entity for the housing front. Other than that, we're ready to go. So I would anticipate probably some representation from the board, Minden City Council together. Maybe as soon as, as next week, sometime towards the end of the week, to get plenty of notice to kind of talk about some priorities and concerns and, and then start getting those coordinating entities on board with, coming up with some strategies or ideas and finding resources to help address those long-term issues that we all may face. Have any questions for me?
Thanks for the update.
Appreciate all the effort.
No, not a problem, not a problem. If you need anything, you know how to reach.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Thanks, Doug. See you, Doug.
All right, moving to Sheri Dullum, Chief Medical Examiner Investigator, Cody Payne Investigator Medical Examiner and Dr. Elliott Medical Examiner. We've asked our medical examination team to come and to the board and give us an update. Take it away.
Good morning. So Cody and I have been working diligently to get everything rectified on our billing, being behind, and that is pretty close to done, just resolution with the two larger funeral homes on that. They're doing some reconciliation with their records and that should be resolved by the end of this fiscal year.
Very good.
By the end of this fiscal what?
This fiscal year.
By the end of June? By the end of this month then?
Yep.
Yeah, they've got a system in place where everything year-to-date is all, all caught up and, and ongoing, which is really great that they put in. And they've just been working diligently with, you know, especially Hoy and Cutler, who are the lion's share of our back data and so forth. They, they just felt like they needed more time to reconcile all their records with, with our records and so forth. But we've got a commitment from Cutler to have pretty much all taken care, not pretty much, but all taken care of by the end of this month. And, and we're, we feel like Hoy will be able to do that as well, so. And then going forward, we, we have a system in place and, and shouldn't be any issues any longer, so.
Glad to hear that.
And easy to train and cross-train people to, to keep that system going forward.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's a huge thing, you know, with the addition of Cody, you know, and his experience with, you know, Excel files and, and keeping track of all the data, things like that. Taking the load off of Sheri and, and all the work that she had to do on the side of it. They're an excellent team now that, that we can kind of keep any, any and all of that, you know, up to date in order to keep eyes on it and so forth. So we shouldn't get into that issue any further.
Some systems.
We're, we're pretty confident, yeah, we're pretty confident that we've got that taken care of.
Pretty solid process.
Good, good.
Exactly.
You guys swap weekends?
Sometimes we do them together.
Yeah. It's, it's pretty, I mean, we, we make it work.
Okay.
We're very flexible. We fill in where necessary. This month is a, is a, a rougher month for coverage because we've got three investigators right now out of town at training. We have several people that do vacations, you know, or have other things going on. So we fill in where we need to, but it's a good balance. It works.
What would the autopsy transportation fee be now?
Well, what we've looked at, we've done an analysis of our current policy. And the policy has been in effect since 2012. And that policy was set up with a reimbursement fee to the transporting funeral home to the state medical examiner's office in Ankeny of $450. And that's regardless of where the funeral home was located. If they were to retrieve the individual that they transported and return them back, they would receive a $300 fee or $750 round trip. The analysis of that is in 2012, they, if we looked at the federal mileage rates, currently our fees equate to an overall reimbursement of 321 per mile if they're just going to the state, 214 a mile to bring them back, and a round trip is 268 per mile regardless of the federal mileage rate. So our fees are actually quite adequate compared to those number of rates. We've done some comparisons with other counties. Story County sends all of their autopsies to the state. It's a very short distance for them. It's, Ankeny is about 35 miles one way. And they do a two-year contract to the lowest bidding funeral home. Scott County, which includes Davenport, they send all of their autopsies to the state. They pay currently $401.37 per transport, which equates to $2.40 per mile. Johnson County does their own transports. They have two vehicles. They also have five full-time investigators, so they cover all of that themselves. And then we did a reference for rural purposes in Nebraska, just for sake of seeing what they're doing over there. And in Lincoln County, which includes North Platte, they have an individual that does transports at a cost of $1.85 per mile only when they have cargo. So...
Where do they go?
Omaha. And so that estimate for that transport's $518 just with cargo the one way, so.
I still don't understand why we don't go to Omaha.
Do you want to take that one again?
No, because I've explained it 12 times already.
But I believe Mills County still is doing that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Neither here nor there.
Yeah, you know, Mills County, you know, doesn't have near the number of autopsies and sometimes, you know, I suppose you could argue in each way, are they more sensitive type of cases and so forth? I guess we've just set it up to the fact that we've really tried to keep things in Iowa with as professional as we can because they are board-certified forensic pathologists doing these autopsies. We really don't want to miss anything. And I'm not saying that the, the, you know, team in Omaha is any less, you know, prepared or expertise either. But, you know, I think again, if, if you talk to Matt Wilbur and so forth, when we do bring cases that need someone to testify, these guys are just second to none. And, and so it's, there's just such a great working relationship there that we, we really feel like the extra effort is worth it.
Seem to be transporting more of them. Is that a...
Well, I think it goes in ebbs and flows. You know, if you look at, if you look at our history over the last 20 years that I've been doing this almost, we're somewhere between 50 and 60 autopsies a year, and we've been pretty stable. You know, it's been pretty regular that way. You know, and, and some months we might have eight, and then a month we don't have any, or one, or something like that. And so it, it, it just depends. It, it's time of year, type of deaths, things like that, you know, that we really feel. And I think there's a lot of medical examiners that would probably send maybe 50% or more than we send now. But I think with our team that does such a great job investigating, we discuss these. If we can just do a drug screen and not a full autopsy, we'll do that. And just really do a lot of medical investigation, discussing it with family and witnesses and things like that, so. The only thing that, as, as we spoke about that, you know, we paid the 450 initially and the 300 back just because, okay, it might be an off-hour transport or something like that. It's a little bit more, you can't plan it like you can. Okay, well, autopsy's done. Do we have to do it at midnight? No. You can wait a day or two and, and pick that person back up to bring them home. A lot of times, you know, if it happened on a Saturday, we felt like, well, they'd take them right there on Saturday. But what's happened over the years is, most of the time, unless it's a homicide or something real sensitive, they don't have to be there that day. And so we'll, we'll let them wait 12 hours, 18 hours. And if they want to wait until Monday morning and take them, that's fine. And so the only thing that we thought about was if we needed to adjust, you know, as we look at this, you know, we're probably in the high median of reimbursement right now, you know, throughout the state. And so I don't think we're underpaying them. I don't think we're overpaying them. I think they're fair. You know, if, if, and I don't know, I, they haven't talked to me about it. I don't know if anyone's really been breathing down your neck about feeling like they're underpaid or how that's working.
Good, we just review it every so often.
Yeah.
Only thing that was ever said, and I haven't heard a word lately, to be honest with you, was are, are they still staying over there waiting to bring it back?
No, rarely, yeah.
It's a drop in return.
Yeah.
Yeah, otherwise, because autopsy's not necessarily that next day. It just depends. I mean, it, it's a first come, first served unless you've got a high-profile or high sensitivity case.
Still, does two of them have to go?
I don't believe two are required to go on a transport.
Okay.
I believe they send two for removals for the sake of the physical necessity.
Are we just still one funeral home or, or both of them doing it at this time?
So we only have one for the on-call removals and they will do transports. But if a family does request a specific funeral home and is an autopsy case, that funeral home is expected to take them to Ankeny. So in the event that the on-call funeral home takes them to Ankeny and then another funeral home intercepts because the family chose someone, the on-call funeral home is still getting that $150 removal fee for their troubles on that.
I'm curious, it's in the news, COVID vaccines. Have you seen anything on those lines of younger athletes even? Pass, or passing away? And they suspect it might be the COVID issue? Any of that going on that you know, you guys know of?
You know, I don't think we've had any in our county of really young people in that respect. You know, we have had a few deaths over the last several years where there's been, obviously, it's very difficult to tie, but in middle-aged or elderly, you know, coinciding maybe a week or two after a vaccine or a week or two after actually having COVID. But yet they had some heart disease or something else going on too. And could that have expedited their death? Possible, but it's just hard to totally quantify.
Okay, have you, have you seen anything as far as increase because of blood clotting, for instance? I mean, that's, that seems to be a prevalent issue.
Yeah, we don't have any specific data on that, no.
Thank you.
So we don't have any handouts about your current fees or anything, so...
I can shoot you the policy. I can email that to you.
Are, are you making a recommendation to revise anything or to leave it as is?
You know, I think my recommendation would be that we, we leave, leave it as is. I think it's working. I think it's fair based on, you know, the other counties that we surveyed and so forth. And so I don't feel like we need to do anything different right now. And I do think it's fair, you know, I, I kind of thought about, well, should we make both of those even? Going 400, back 400 instead of 450 and 300. But I think it's probably reasonable for that person that's picking them up, you know, it's a little bit more inconvenient to make sure they get there versus scheduling to bring them back. I, I think that's fine. And we haven't had any feedback from the funeral homes that they think that's unfair.
How many miles is it?
It is, it's 141-way, 280-round trip.
Any other questions for medical examiners?
I'm good.
I really appreciate you taking the time to come in this morning. Appreciate the update, all the extra effort and patch those records up, but...
Yeah, we're looking forward to be able to report that we're all caught up and, and ready.
See what that looks like. You're saying that'll be the, by the end of this?
Yeah, we, we really feel like we should be almost at by July 1.
We, oh, good.
Yeah.
Well, that's a pot of gold. Good. There, you're on board, Cody.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Glad to be here.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheri. See ya.
Moving to Jason Slack, Director, Buildings and Grounds, and a Giltwood Division project bid opening.
Looks like we get three bids today. I've got some bid tab ones for you guys.
The bids were all received before 10 a.m. at the Board of Supervisors Office.
I'm sorry.
The, the bids were all received by 10 a.m. this morning at the Board of Supervisors Office.
Yeah. Biddle open is National Concrete. W9's enclosed. Certificate of Insurance is enclosed. OSHA 10-hour certificate is enclosed. Lump sum-based bid, $49,000.
No contractor's license?
No.
What's, what's that on there for?
What's that?
What's it, what's it on here for? Contractor's license?
I put it in there just to, as a...
Is that a state license or what is it?
It's just to provide their contractor's license.
Yeah, but...
And that could be provided.
Who, who issues the license?
The city.
Oh, a city?
Yep.
Okay.
What, what was that cost again?
$49,000.
They'll have to get a permit from the city to do this, right?
Yep. Yep. The contractor is responsible for getting the permit. Second bid is Cox Contracting. OSHA thirty-hour is enclosed. License is enclosed. Contractor license is enclosed, certificate of insurance is enclosed, W nine is enclosed. Uh, lump sum-based bid, thirty-eight thousand. Third and final bid is Jim's Holling. Certificate of insurance is enclosed. Lump sum-based bid, forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
A- and it's my understanding that owner-operators are small, that they don't require the OSHA certifications.
Uh, the county's requiring the OSHA certification.
But if the, if the owner-operator is a small business, it doesn't require, isn't required by OSHA to have one, I don't see how we could require them to have something that they're not normally required to have.
It's a liability issue. If they're working on our property, I don't know.
Yes, it's a liability issue. Normally the contractors, a OSHA certified, even with, uh, across the street, uh, the construction going on with, um, um, Women's Public Health Building, all their employees and stuff like that, OSHA certified when they did the renovation of the courthouse, uh, even though we had an issue here on the courthouse when OSHA showed up. They look at OSHA certificates to make sure that they're certified. And, um, so, yeah.
But I think the owner-operators, when you do a federal law, supersedes the state and the locals, correct?
We, we, we have all, our OSHA that, that drives state power, uh, which it, it's an agreement, our OSHA is an agreement with the federal OSHA to follow the federal standards, but our OSHA has their own personal standards.
And I think an owner-operator does not have to go through that class.
They take the liability, if any finds anything that comes up, then we will, we will want the certificate insurance to, to reflect that. Those have not, then it's the owner, which is Pot County, will be responsible for any fines, anything that's issued out.
All, all of the, all of these, uh, figures are, uh, the, the, it's the same job, you know, just demolition, removal, material removal, all of that.
It's all been off the same, uh, request for proposals. Um, and there, the project schedules, the permit issuance and utility disconnection must be done within one month of notice to proceed. Um, annexed building demolition project must be completed within three weeks of utility disconnection.
Where, where are these three companies located at? You guys have any insight to where they're, where they're?
All council blocks.
All council blocks?
Yep.
Is Cox Contracting, is that COX or?
COX, correct.
Have we done business with them before?
Um, I don't know if we have or not. I have not personally.
They're, they're a pretty good company. They're down on, uh, well, they were right here on Erie Langdon. I think now they're down on whose, are you down there?
We don't, we don't have any conflicts of interest with them. We don't have anybody from the courthouse that works for them or related to them or.
Not to my knowledge.
Jason, do you need any time to, to, um, re, Jason and Ben, you guys need any time to review these and make sure everything's in?
I don't think so. Everything's pretty much laid out in the RFP. I do know that the salvage rights belong to the contractor only after notice to proceed has been issued. Um, meaning that we will go in there and, and take the things out of the building that we can salvage for other county facilities just to, you know, try to save the cost to taxpayers on different things.
Is the building totally empty then?
Not yet. No, it won't be ready. It won't be empty until, uh, probably mid-June. Uh, the asbestos abatement is scheduled to start on the seventeenth of June.
Now you gotta go in and remove any drawers or desks, anything like that.
Right now, we have different county departments going through, kind of, uh, going over anything that they need for their department. They're able to get out of that building and we're able to utilize.
So do you leave the rest or do you guys get a dumpster?
We'll leave whatever, whatever's left in the building, in the building. Which probably won't be a whole lot, so.
So do they pay for the dumpster or do you, do we?
They're, they're turning the building down and hauling it all off.
So will it be just, um, um, when done, just, um, basically dirt filled back?
Yeah, and that, that's covered in here too.
Okay.
I can find it.
That's fine.
Uh, backfill, ex- excavated areas are associated, uh, with the removal and the substrate should be backfilled to grade with a well-graded granular material, um, having a maximum size of two inches.
Go back to back.
Yep.
Yeah.
You decided that the tree needs to come out?
The trees will need to come out if we plan on doing a parking lot in that area. There's two trees on that property.
Jason, I'm still concerned about the rest of the stuff inside. And the reason being that when they're hauling off that cement, that's going to recycling. And the recycling place does not want wood in there. Or desks or whatever, you know?
There, there's wood in the structure too. I mean, there's wood in the tree.
I get that.
Yep.
But that's tearing the building down, not emptying the.
Right.
Emptying the building.
Right. There may be some items left in there. I could, I, I don't know for sure.
I just wonder, and if we don't have that much, they could go in our dumpster?
I mean, if we hire a dumpster, we can do that. That's, should be included in the, the removal of the building.
I think the contractor takes, they put their bid together with that, understanding that they would move, remove everything.
Cox Contracting has been in business for thirty years. See on their Facebook page.
Yeah.
Is that your recommendation, Jason?
It is.
I, I, I want to ask about the insurance quick. Um, you just opened the packets. You said the insurance certificate was in there, but you didn't have a chance to verify if it met all of the limits. And if the dates, effective dates were correct, I'll give you another minute here so you can verify the information.
Uh, the date's correct. It looks like it meets our minimum requirements. One million dollars. So, we're good on insurance.
One million in each of the categories?
Yep.
Not in arborists, but are those, are those trees to a size that they're not salvageable then?
I don't know. I mean, I, I'd have to talk to merbauers.
Well, or can conservation have someone take a look at them or something?
Sure.
Maybe if you can pull them out of there and throw them in a park or?
What are, what are the?
I don't see that.
About that big round?
That long?
Uh, one's about two-foot diameter trunk, the other one's a little bit smaller.
I think the ninety-inch tree spade can only, it can't go a two-foot base, I know that.
Okay, fine. It seemed like we planted those right after I got here, but.
Well, it seemed like, was that something that Justin Schultz? Some acquaintance of his or somebody planted a tree memorial thing? Maybe it wasn't a tree, maybe it was a plaque.
We moved the plaque to that tree, just to the east of the annexed building. We would have to find a new home for, a new tree for it to go to.
Okay.
We can get one over there.
I'll make a motion to, um, award the contract to Cox Contracting in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars for the removal of the annexed building.
I'll second that.
Just want to clarify on the OSHA standard, I'm, I'm reading it right now when it comes to the training and education. Says employers must provide training to employees in the specific safety and health aspects of their workplace. This includes any potential hazards. All new employees supervised by the top management that goes on and on. All employees must also know the proper use of PPE, so forth. OSHA provides an outreach training program to five workers with the basic advanced training about common safety, health hazards. Pretensement can choose the OSHA ten or OSHA thirty hours. And I think what Jason required was the basic of OSHA ten hours of, for this, for this program. So OSHA does say that you have to have at least a ten to thirty hours. Thirty hours is more advanced, but the ten is the basics.
It's fairly easy to get. You get it online.
That's covered underneath the training and education section of the OSHA standards. And that's, that's related to small businesses and large businesses as well.
I, you know, we looked up the OSHA deal. And it says if you're a sole proprietor under six employees, you're exempt. Right online. And you know.
All right. So we have a motion by Wickman and a second by Jorgensen to approve and award the bid to Cox Contracting to demolish the annexed building for thirty-eight thousand dollars. Additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? As carried. Thank you very much.
All of utilities have been disconnected over there.
Not yet. Utilities are all inactive throughout the asbestos abatement. Um, and then, once the we let Cox know that it's time for them to proceed with the work, then they can go ahead and disconnect. They'll coordinate with the.
They'll, they'll cut everything off, cap everything, whatever they need to.
Yep.
As best as removal is starting June seventeenth, then is that a thirty-day process as well or?
Um, I, I think you said it's going to be around a three-week process.
Three weeks?
Off the top of your head, Jase, do you remember what that, uh, what that cost was? That's okay. I'll get it from you later. It's not that big of a deal. We already awarded it. Okay.
Just want to make sure, before they do, uh, they check and make sure nobody's in there before they knock it down.
Right. We'll make sure.
You know, I mean, there's
Once, once.
It's busy, it's a busy, uh, busy alley and a
Right, yep.
You know.
But once we start asbestos abatement, we will remove everybody, all the county employees access away from the building, so they can't get in. And then, uh, it'll be.
But if there's bad weather or night, somebody thinks there's something in there, they're.
We still have.
We'll be calling Sher, we'll be.
We still have our cameras too.
We'll be calling Sherry, come back.
We don't need that.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Tina Trentos, Operations Administrator, Secondary Roads, discussion and or decision to approve and authorize the board to sign resolution forty-four dash twenty-two-four, amending resolution oh-seven dash twenty-two-four, authorizing the county engineer and assistant engineer to certify completion papers and make final acceptance of contract work on the farm-to-market and federal aid systems. And we approved resolution seven dash twenty-two-four back on January second, I believe. And at that time, we did not include Brandon as an authorized signer.
He didn't start till June thirty-second.
So we need to amend the resolution so Brandon can be effective in his job and.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Motion by Wickman, who got the second? Belt? All right. Anything else you want to add?
What are you going to first?
All right. Melvin, will you call the roll, please?
Chairman Miller?
Aye.
Supervisors Belt?
Aye.
Wickman?
Aye.
Shay?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you very much. Next up, Mitch Kai, Chief Financial Officer, discussion and or decision to authorize chair to sign the acknowledgement of forgiveness, request satisfaction and loan forgiveness for the City of Crescent.
So moved.
Second.
All of the paperwork is in.
That was a person check from Brian, is that correct?
Yes. Of all those documentations in there, that's part of the hundred and twenty-five that each town got.
I could have bought a motorcycle. Can you get, um, like a, I don't know, say a video or some pictures to go with the documentation?
Yeah, we can. I know Craig has a bunch of it too.
Does he good?
Yeah, we've got, I'll take photos of like the before and, before and after photos and stuff.
Yeah, that's what we wanted.
Yeah.
To show.
Yeah, and I think he's gonna, you know, he's gonna re-spotlight all the towns too, on the county side and stuff.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, if you actually want it in here, I can get it out into here, but we have them, so.
Okay, that's.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Seeing it's better than.
Yeah, we want to let all the towns show off what they did with the funds and stuff, yeah, for sure.
Great.
Have, have that, show all of them at one time, yeah.
Yeah, and you know, like, about once a quarter, I, we kind of drive around and look and see what the progress looks like too, to see who's kind of ready to submit their forms and stuff.
Did you move that, Brian?
I did.
Belt did. Jorgensen, second.
Okay.
All right. Additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, Mitch Kai, Chief Financial Officer, discussion and or decision to authorize board chair to sign the library agreement with the Potawatomi County Libraries Trustees of the towns of Aboka, Carter Lake, Council Bluffs, Oakland, and Walnut. In your packet, we've got the library agreement.
This, this agreement was, um, reviewed, um, through legal too as well. I think you guys have seen this before, so it doesn't, this doesn't change anything. It just kind of cements everything that we talked about during our budget discussions. I mean, Carter Lake had a little bit of a changeover, or a changeover in some of their librarians, so we kind of hadn't got this form back. And then when I reached out to their new one just last week, they were real prompt on getting that to us. That's what I had been waiting on. So now we have everything from everybody.
Okay, and Walnut has a new librarian?
Walnut is as well.
Do you know what her name is? Quite read the signature.
And these are the trustees, so these are.
Oh, the trustees, you're right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Belt, second by Shay to enter into the library agreement, move five libraries. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion as carried. Right. Next, discussion and or decision to approve application for permit to display fireworks filed by Connor Golospy for display on June twenty-ninth or July third in the event of severe weather at two-seven-five-three-eight Dogwood Road Trainer. We have the application in our packet.
Insurance is up?
So moved.
The.
Second.
The insurance is I think they're going to watch it, or it's been requested for renewal because the policy in our packet expires on six-twenty-four, twenty-two-four. And the display is six-twenty-nine, twenty-two-four. So I think Pam is watching that and she's requested an updated policy and it will be in place.
Should we amend that to approval upon renewal of? Are you?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll, I'll still second that.
These people are
Right.
First, they're not bringing it, are they?
No, this is probably the fifth year.
I was gonna say, I thought so. She wrote, like, see that or just, no.
Okay, so I missed it. Who made the motion?
I did.
Second.
Motion by Belt, the second by Shay to approve the application for permit on approval of, upon receipt of updated insurance.
Yep.
And the additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Absolutely.
Okay. Next on the agenda is discussion and or decision on approval to purchase chairs for the board hearing room. Um, I think we're just to the point where we're tired of discussing this. Um, I think we're just to the point where we're tired of discussing this.
Are we gonna go with the ones Jeff's got?
Um, except it'll have a leather seat. It's got a ten-year warranty. Um, all, all of the chairs will be the same size. We're not getting big and tall sizes. We're not getting short and petite sizes. We're getting all the same sizes.
One size fits all.
And we.
Comfortable?
We can go out and do more research.
These chairs here are staying?
No, these chairs are the ones that are being replaced.
Where are they going to?
Um, we don't know.
I think, I'll take this one to my desk. I got one of the original chairs that we had when we first started back there. I think those are better.
Yeah, I still got one in my office. Took over there many years ago.
And we still have grant money to cover this. Is that correct, Mitch?
Yeah, we do.
We need to get that grant closed out.
Yep.
And this was the only thing left on that grant?
No, there's still be a little bit more left.
So are you getting seven of these chairs?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve. A second.
Prove the purchase of seven chairs for the board hearing room. At a cost of eight hundred ninety-seven each.
Melvin, that'd be the L A T C F funds.
Okay.
And, and, uh, ten, what'd you say, ten years?
I thought you used it all on this.
We had a little bit left on there.
You said ten years?
Yes.
Local, what is that?
Area tribal.
Black.
No, tell these.
Originally it was a five-year.
Oh, so it's a lifetime warranty for a single shift user, twelve years for twenty-four by seven. So we're not gonna be using them twenty-four by seven.
You said eight hundred ninety-seven apiece?
Yes. Motion by Shay and a second by Jorgensen. Additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Right. Committee appointments update from last week. Jeff, you wanna go first?
Well, I was at the meeting, uh, Department of Health and Human Services yesterday. They are going through a statewide reorganization as we speak. Uh, it looks to be about a two-year process. It's gonna be ongoing. Uh, they're, they're looking to, uh, like you said, reorganize and uh, get, uh, get active in, uh, in their mission, so it's, it's to be a, a positive outlook for them, so.
Albany County, is that with you Suzanne?
Yeah, that's the region.
Yeah. How many counties is it still?
It's still nine.
Nine?
Yeah.
And do, do we, do all the boards get about one vote then?
No, that changed about a year ago.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
So is it private citizens that are doing the voting then?
Uh, we have education, we have, uh, two, um, providers, and then we have two.
Users.
Users of the system.
Then the voters?
That all vote now. And then we have five boards of supervisors.
And we just supply the money?
No, you supply no money.
Through the state.
You're, the state is completely funding it up.
Yeah, but we're the fund, we're the financial.
Who's the head?
You're the physical agent.
Right. Okay.
Yes, and the employer, the record, and, yeah, and.
In the last draft map, I saw there were seventeen counties. Oh.
So, um, they'll, they'll be out for public discussion, so, um, but yeah, it probably, the district increases somewhere between twenty and twenty-five counties, so depending on what math you. They.
Oh. What's that for next year?
That starts July one twenty-five.
It does. It's already been.
Yeah, passed legislation this year.
Okay.
It's on a very fast timeline.
Yeah, subject to change.
I'll send you the PowerPoint that I, um, presented to the board yesterday. It's got a good outline.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for going in my place. I can't miss it, you know, very interesting.
Where, where are you guys in Oakland now, or where are you at? Atlantic still, or where are you at?
Uh, we meet in Oakland.
Oakland.
About every other month.
Will you, you still do that with this new map?
Uh, no, it'll change to an advisory committee.
There's an RFP that you'll have to.
And there'll be an RFP that we have to respond to and, yeah.
Where do you think you'll be, end up meeting at?
Meeting?
Yeah, that larger.
Advisory, it might be online, because I don't know how you can. Have to travel that far.
Further they can get you away, the better, I guess.
We just, first step is we have to apply and hopefully get in.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And how many times has that changed since we've been up here?
What, the district? Well, it's, every year, something changes. That was in thirteen when they formed the regions. We started talking about regions ten years ago.
All right, Brian?
Um, bike trail. Waiting to find out about some grants. We've applied for a couple of big ones and many little ones. Uh, then Conservation, Advanced Southwest Iowa. I went and inspected the C N R Levy one day and then went to the Minden FEMA. That was an eye-opener there. I don't wanna go into. And you know where Crescent was.
Okay. Got?
Well.
Cam?
Tour the, tour the county on roads and damages one day, but that's about it.
In your emails, you would have received a message from Brenda Mainwaring, Bedlam West Foundation is replacing three board members that are terming off. And the county board is one of the nominating bodies. Um, I did resubmit the name that I submitted last year that wasn't accepted, but it was put into the holding pool. But, um, they're looking for as many qualified people as can, as they can put into the pool to find three new board members.
And they're using their restrictions. They don't, you can just submit a name and then they'll contact them and do the, do the due diligence where that packet scared a lot of them away.
It took a while to accumulate all of the information.
Yeah.
So as department heads, if you know of an individual that resides in Potawatomi County that would be interested in a leadership responsibility and has passport experience, um, contact one of the supervisors and we can get the nomination paper submitted for you.
They're losing a lawyer.
No, I can't.
A realtor.
And a banker.
And a banker. But that, I mean, they have to fill those positions, but that's what they're losing.
Yes.
It's tougher and tougher to get young people to be involved and it's pretty time-consuming. Especially if they have activities and have kids, it's.
Each of the board members serves on other task forces and committees, so. It's good organization. And then yesterday I signed the paperwork for the parking lot that we purchased at the public health facility.
Are they written from us now over there?
Um, Mitch, do you wanna provide an update?
Sure. So we, yeah, so we, you know, got close on it. Their funding will actually show up there tomorrow. Um, but then we have the rent rolls currently and then I'll work, me and Matt are kinda working together with, uh, kinda what Boyd joins, is, is gonna be too and some of that. We'll get the notifications out, um, reach, I think, reach out to legal already and see if we can drop the letter just to make sure they have our contact information as well too, so do we have theirs?
You know, we, you know, they're renting that.
Yeah, I have the list.
Okay.
Yep.
I mean, we're ready.
So there's eleven spots there, but I think there's only like six or seven renters. I think they have like three, they might have three spots or four spots and they sublease those out from there or something along those lines, but we'll get to the bottom of that here shortly, so.
Where are they?
Various places.
We're gonna cancel that.
At some, at some point in time, we definitely have to. We don't know if it's gonna be, if it'll be immediately or if we're gonna let them be there for a minute or two. Yeah, we'll figure that out and kind of work with the contractors, so. It's, I mean, the, the spot rents are roughly thirty dollars a month. There's like three hundred dollars coming in a month, so it's not like it's a big revenue source, of course, by any means, so we wanna give them time to relocate if they need to, so we'll try to find that balance.
Thank you, Mitch.
Yes.
We're gonna book them up. We give free hot dogs.
Hot dog day.
Yes, it is.
All right, and I'm assuming nobody signed up for public comments?
No, public comment, I'll stop the live broadcast then.
Hmm, at this group, there's no comments?
All right, so now we're moving to the study session, and this is the discussion on the.